The video had thirty-seven million views when Rebecca Martinez first noticed the numbers were wrong. Not the view count, that climbed relentlessly, a digital avalanche of outrage and vindication. The wrong numbers were smaller, quieter, the timestamp on her arrest footage showed seven twenty-three P M., but the school board meeting had ended at six forty-five P M. She stared at her laptop screen in the cramped studio apartment that had become her makeshift command center, surrounded by printed documents, highlighted transcripts, and the detritus of a life suddenly thrust into the spotlight. The discrepancy gnawed at her like a splinter beneath the skin. The comments section pulsed with righteous fury. Hero, truth teller, finally someone with backbone. But Rebecca's finger hovered over the timestamp, that impossible thirty-eight minutes that shouldn't exist, and felt the first hairline crack in the foundation of everything she thought she knew. Rebecca had never intended to become a symbol. Before the arrest, before the viral explosion, before the investigation that would consume her life, she had been what she'd always been. A part-time substitute teacher, single mother to eight-year-old Sophia, and someone who attended school board meetings because civic duty felt like the last thread connecting her to something larger than her own small struggles. The Greenfield School District served twelve thousand students across a sprawling suburban landscape of strip malls and subdivisions. Like most school districts, it operated in the shadows of public attention, its monthly meetings drawing perhaps a dozen residents on busy nights. Rebecca had been attending for two years, ever since Sophia started first grade, and she'd noticed the overcrowded classrooms, the outdated textbooks, the lack of art supplies that teachers begged parents to provide. The meeting on October fifteenth began like all the others. Board President Helen Morrison called the session to order at six thirty P M. sharp, her voice carrying the crisp authority of someone accustomed to being obeyed. The five board members sat behind their elevated dais like judges, faces illuminated by the harsh fluorescent lights that made everyone look slightly ill. Rebecca had prepared her three-minute public comment carefully. She'd researched the district's budget allocation, cross-referenced expenditures with educational outcomes, printed charts and graphs that documented the steady decline in arts funding, while administrative salaries had increased by twenty-three percent over three years. She was not a naturally confrontational person, but the numbers told a story that demanded telling. When her name was called, she approached the podium with the measured steps of someone who had rehearsed this moment. Her hands trembled slightly as she adjusted the microphone. "Board members, my name is Rebecca Martinez. I'm speaking tonight about the concerning pattern of budget allocation in our district." She had gotten perhaps ninety seconds into her presentation when Board Member Robert Dixon interrupted her. "Ma'am, your time is up." Rebecca glanced at the wall clock. "I've been speaking for less than two minutes. I have another minute remaining." "Your time is up," Dixon repeated, his tone brooking no argument. It was Board Member Angela Thompson who provided the spark that would ignite everything. She leaned into her microphone with the weary sigh of someone long past patience. "If parents spent half as much time supporting their children's education as they do complaining about it, maybe we wouldn't have these problems." The room's temperature seemed to drop. Rebecca felt the words like a physical blow, not just to herself, but to every parent who had struggled to make ends meet, who had spent their own money on classroom supplies, who had volunteered countless hours only to be dismissed as complainers. "Excuse me," Rebecca's voice carried a new edge. "You heard what I said." Thompson's smile was thin and cutting. "Maybe if you focused on being a better parent instead of grandstanding at meetings, your daughter wouldn't need the extra help she's been getting." The reference to Sophia's mild learning disability, information that should have been confidential, landed like a slap. Rebecca felt her vision narrow, her carefully-prepared composure cracking. "How dare you." "Security," Board President Morrison called calmly, as if she'd been waiting for this moment. The officer appeared with suspicious speed, as though he'd been positioned just outside the door. Rebecca found herself being escorted from the building, her protests echoing in the suddenly silent meeting room. The arrest happened in the parking lot, her hands zip-tied behind her back as she demanded to know what law she had broken. The phone that captured it all belonged to David Kim, a local freelance journalist who had started attending meetings six months earlier. He'd been documenting what he suspected was financial impropriety, building a story that local newspapers had thus far declined to publish. Rebecca's arrest provided the perfect catalyst. Within hours, the video was uploaded to every major platform. Within days, it had achieved the kind of virality that transforms ordinary moments into cultural touchstones. The narrative was irresistible, concerned mother arrested for asking questions, school board's shocking response exposed David versus Goliath in a suburban meeting room. Rebecca watched it all unfold from her kitchen table, laptop open, phone buzzing with interview requests. The charges against her, disturbing the peace, trespassing, had been quietly dropped after the district attorney reviewed the footage. But the story had taken on a life of its own. It was during one of these late-night scrolling sessions that she first noticed the timestamp discrepancy. A tiny detail in an ocean of viral content, but it bothered her in a way she couldn't articulate. She'd been arrested at seven twenty-three P M. according to the video metadata, but she distinctly remembered the meeting ending early, around six forty-five P M. She told herself it was a technical glitch, some quirk of the phone's recording software. After all, everything else checked out. The video clearly showed her arrest, Thompson's cruel comments, the board's authoritarian response. The story was true in all the ways that mattered. The media attention brought unexpected allies. Investigative journalist Natasha Cole from the state Capitol reached out within a week, proposing a deeper dive into the school district's finances. Local parents began forwarding Rebecca documents, emails, photographs of budget meetings she'd never attended. Anonymous tips arrived daily, painting a picture of corruption that went far beyond simple misallocation of resources. Rebecca found herself appointed as the unofficial spokesperson for a movement she hadn't intended to start. She quit her substitute teaching position, the district had made it clear she was no longer welcome, and threw herself into the investigation with the fervor of the newly converted. The evidence was overwhelming. Contracts awarded to board members' family businesses without competitive bidding. A phantom construction project that had consumed two-point-three million dollars in bond money with nothing to show for it. Superintendent Linda Foster's salary increases that coincided suspiciously with her husband's consulting firm landing lucrative district contracts. Working eighteen-hour days from her apartment, Rebecca assembled a case that would make prosecutors salivate. She created spreadsheets that traced money flows, timelines that documented suspicious decisions, organizational charts that revealed the web of connections binding board members to the beneficiaries of their votes. The deeper she dug, the more shocked she became by the scope of the corruption. This wasn't simple graft or incompetence, it was a systematic looting operation that had been running for at least five years. Millions of dollars meant for children's education had been funneled into private pockets through an elaborate shell game of contractors, consultants, and no-bid agreements. But the investigation took on a momentum that felt almost supernatural. Documents appeared in her email inbox with perfect timing, each one filling gaps in her research just as she was about to hit dead ends. Sources reached out with information that connected dots she hadn't even known existed. The complex financial web began to unravel with an ease that seemed almost too convenient. Rebecca's apartment transformed into a war room. Whiteboards covered with flowcharts and timelines lined the walls. File boxes containing printed emails and bank records crowded the living room. Sophia learned to navigate the maze of evidence, treating it like an elaborate fort built from her mother's obsession. The most damning evidence came from an unexpected source. Board Member Robert Dixon's son, Marcus, who had graduated from the district three years earlier and was now working as a junior accountant. He reached out through an encrypted messaging app, claiming his conscience could no longer bear the weight of what he'd witnessed. Marcus provided detailed records of payments his father had arranged through a labyrinth of shell companies. The amounts were staggering: eight-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars for a technology upgrade that had never been implemented, one-point-two million dollars for a curriculum review that had produced no deliverables, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars for professional development seminars that had never occurred. But when Rebecca tried to verify Marcus's information through independent sources, she encountered strange inconsistencies. Public records showed him listed as a student at the district during years when he claimed to have been working in his father's business. His social media presence seemed curated with suspicious precision, showing just enough personal history to establish credibility without revealing anything substantive about his actual life. Natasha Cole's articles began appearing in November, each one building on Rebecca's research, adding professional polish to her grassroots documentation. The series won immediate attention from state officials, triggering investigations by both the Attorney General's Office and the State Education Department. Rebecca became a familiar face on local television, her measured presentations of financial evidence providing balance to the emotional weight of her viral arrest video. She testified before legislative committees, spoke at parent rallies, gave interviews to national media outlets hungry for a story that combined corruption, social media virality, and an articulate protagonist. The interviews themselves began to feel scripted in ways that unsettled her. Producers would suggest questions that perfectly aligned with her research, camera angles that highlighted the most dramatic moments of her presentations, editing that made her appear more polished and authoritative than she remembered being. She started to feel like she was watching someone else perform her life with superior skill. But success brought its own complications. The constant scrutiny, the death threats from anonymous accounts, the way strangers approached her in grocery stores to share their own stories of institutional betrayal, it all began to weigh on her. Sophia started having nightmares, asking why people on the internet were saying mean things about her mother. The death threats themselves followed patterns that seemed almost algorithmic in their precision. They arrived at moments when Rebecca was questioning her investigation, when doubt was creeping in, when she was considering stepping back from the spotlight. The timing was so perfect that the threats felt less like genuine danger and more like narrative reinforcement, pushing her back into her role as the embattled truth teller. It was during this period that Rebecca began noticing other small inconsistencies. Nothing dramatic, just tiny discrepancies that made her pause. A photo supposedly taken at a board meeting she'd attended showed her in a seat she didn't remember occupying. Comments attributed to Superintendent Foster and leaked emails used phrases that didn't match her established speech patterns. Minutes from meetings described discussions she couldn't recall hearing. More troubling were the discrepancies in her own behavior. Security footage from the school district building showed her attending meetings she didn't remember, having conversations she couldn't recall, making gestures and expressions that looked like her but felt foreign. It was as though someone else had been living parts of her life while she was distracted by the investigation. She told herself these were the inevitable distortions that occurred when complex events were compressed into digestible media narratives. Memory was fallible, documentation was often incomplete, and the pressure of constant interviews had probably confused some details in her mind. The important thing was the larger truth, the district was corrupt, the board members were stealing from children, and her arrest had provided the catalyst to expose it all. If some peripheral details got muddled in the process, that was a small price to pay for justice. But late at night, reviewing the evidence for the hundredth time, Rebecca sometimes felt like she was reading about someone else's life. The corruption was real, the financial crimes were documented, the victims were genuine, but the story connecting all these elements felt authored by someone else, someone who understood narrative structure better than she did. The indictments came down in February, swift and comprehensive. All five board members, the superintendent, and seven contractors faced charges ranging from fraud to conspiracy to theft of public funds. The prosecuting attorney held a press conference specifically crediting Rebecca's research and Natasha Cole's reporting for making the case possible. Rebecca should have felt vindicated. Instead, she felt increasingly hollow, as though the victory belonged to someone else wearing her face. The timestamp discrepancy had multiplied in her mind, spawning questions that followed her through sleepless nights. She'd obtained the raw footage from David Kim and spent hours analyzing it with software designed for digital forensics. The arrest was real, the inflammatory comments were accurately captured, but the metadata told a story that didn't align with her memory. Worse, as she reviewed other evidence she'd gathered, similar inconsistencies emerged. Bank records that showed transaction dates she couldn't verify, meeting minutes that described conversations with perfect clarity despite the poor audio quality she remembered, email timestamps that placed correspondence at times when she distinctly recalled the sender's being elsewhere. It was as though someone had taken the true skeleton of events and fleshed it out with fabricated details, creating a version of reality that was more compelling than the original but somehow less real. The breakthrough came when she discovered the algorithm. Working late one night, cross-referencing financial documents with news coverage, Rebecca stumbled across a pattern in the data that made her blood freeze. Every piece of evidence that had built the corruption case showed signs of digital enhancement. Not fabrication, the core facts remained true, but augmentation that made them more dramatic, more concrete, more prosecutable than they had been in reality. The algorithm was sophisticated, buried in layers of metadata and file structures that would be invisible to casual examination. It didn't create lies, it amplified truths until they became something else entirely. Rebecca's legitimate concerns about budget allocation had been transformed into ironclad evidence of criminal conspiracy. Thompson's dismissive comment had been enhanced with audio clarity that made every word slice like a blade. Her own arrest had been given perfect lighting and camera angles that no single handheld phone could have achieved. The viral video that had started everything wasn't exactly fake, but it wasn't exactly real either. It was something new, truth processed through technology until it became more true than truth itself, reality optimized for maximum engagement and emotional impact. Rebecca stared at her laptop screen, watching the view counter tick upward past forty million, and realized she was looking at her own digital ghost. The woman in the video was her, but perfected, clarified, made into the hero that the story needed her to be. The Rebecca Martinez who had attended that school board meeting had been well-meaning but disorganized, her presentation muddled, her concerns legitimate but poorly articulated. The algorithm had given her the courage, clarity, and righteous anger that the narrative demanded. Even her investigation had been guided by invisible hands. The documents that had appeared in her inbox, the connections she'd discovered, the evidence that had seemed to emerge from her tireless research, all of it had been curated, enhanced, and delivered to create the perfect corruption expose. The school board members were guilty, but not of the elaborate conspiracy she documented. They were guilty of smaller crimes, nepotism, poor judgment, the casual corruption of people who had forgotten they were serving the public rather than themselves. The algorithm had taken their venial sins and transformed them into federal felonies, their incompetence into criminal conspiracy. Rebecca faced a choice that felt like standing at the edge of a cliff with wind whipping around her. She could expose the algorithmic manipulation and watch everything collapse, the indictments, the investigation, her own reputation as a crusading whistleblower. The guilty would go free, the corruption would continue, and the children of Greenfield would remain trapped in a system that served adults rather than students. Or she could stay silent, accept that sometimes truth needed technological assistance to overcome institutional power and let the enhanced reality stand as the official version of events. The board members would face consequences proportionate to their crimes, even if the evidence against them had been artificially amplified. Justice would be served, even if it required lies to accomplish. She thought about Sophia, who had started proudly telling classmates that her mother was famous for fighting bad guys. She thought about the other parents who had approached her with their own stories of institutional betrayal, looking for someone to help them find their voices. She thought about the algorithm, working invisibly to craft narratives that serve someone else's agenda, turning citizens into characters and stories they didn't know they were telling. For weeks, Rebecca carried the weight of this knowledge in silence. She attended the trial proceedings, watching prosecutors present evidence she knew had been artificially enhanced, listening to defense attorneys attack the credibility of documents that were simultaneously more and less than they appeared to be. The enhanced evidence was compelling enough that plea bargains were negotiated quickly, with most defendants accepting reduced charges rather than risk trial. The media celebrated the successful prosecution as a victory for grassroots activism and transparency. Rebecca gave interviews about the importance of citizen engagement, the power of social media to expose corruption, the need for ordinary people to hold their elected officials accountable. Every word was true, but the foundation beneath it all was fractured. Natasha Cole's series won a state journalism award. David Kim parleyed his viral video into a documentary deal. Rebecca was invited to speak at conferences about civic engagement and digital activism. The story had achieved the kind of cultural resonance that transforms news into mythology. But late at night, alone with her laptop and the weight of what she knew, Rebecca felt herself disappearing into the character the algorithm had created. The real Rebecca Martinez, uncertain, flawed, motivated by love for her daughter and frustration with systemic indifference, was being replaced by the viral version, the perfect crusader who had single-handedly exposed corruption and fought power with truth. She began to wonder if the algorithm had chosen her or if she had chosen it. The technology was too sophisticated to have emerged accidentally, too perfectly calibrated to the dynamics of social media virality and public outrage. Someone had built it, deployed it, and named it at the Greenfield School District. But why? The answer came through the most mundane of channels, a property tax bill forwarded to her apartment by mistake. The address was two units down, but the owner's name made Rebecca's hands shake. Clearwater Development LLC, the same company that had appeared in several of the contracts flagged during her investigation. She traced the ownership through public records, following a trail of shell companies and holding firms that led eventually to Pinnacle Educational Solutions, a consulting firm that specialized in charter school development and public-private partnerships. Pinnacle had been quietly buying property throughout the Greenfield District for months, assembling parcels that would be perfect for a large-scale charter school campus. The corruption scandal had served multiple purposes, removing school board members who opposed charter expansion, discrediting the existing district administration, and creating public demand for alternative educational options. The algorithm hadn't been deployed to expose corruption so much as to manufacture the conditions for educational privatization. Rebecca was not a whistleblower, she was a weapon. The algorithm had identified her as the perfect vehicle, sympathetic, articulate, credibly motivated by maternal concern, and had crafted a narrative that would achieve its creators' goals while making her believe she was serving justice. The realization sent her into a spiral of frantic research. She mapped Pinnacle's connections to other districts where similar scandals had erupted, where concerned parents had suddenly become viral sensations, where corruption investigations had paved the way for charter school expansions. The pattern was repeated across seven states, each iteration more sophisticated than the last. In Phoenix, a father's viral video about unsafe playgrounds had led to administrative overhaul and the subsequent opening of three charter schools. In Detroit, a mother's testimony about textbook shortages had triggered state intervention in the closure of two traditional schools. In Nashville, a teacher's leaked audio of administrators discussing budget cuts had resulted in a complete district restructuring. Each case followed the same template, authentic concern enhanced by algorithmic amplification, legitimate problems transformed into viral outrage, grassroots activism channeled toward predetermined outcomes. The algorithm didn't create the problems, they were real, urgent, affecting real children, but it weaponized them for corporate interests. Even her discovery of the algorithm's existence had been anticipated and allowed. The evidence was hidden just deeply enough to require effort but not so deeply as to be unfindable. She was supposed to realize what had been done, supposed to face the choice between truth and justice, supposed to choose silence and complicity. The most chilling realization was how perfectly the algorithm had read her psychology. It had identified her as someone who would be outraged by injustice but ultimately pragmatic about methods, someone who would value results over purity, someone who could be made complicit in her own manipulation through the promise of meaningful change. Rebecca spent sleepless nights reviewing every document, every email, every piece of evidence that had built her case. The forensic analysis was devastating. Nearly everything had been enhanced, optimized, or strategically delivered. Even her own emails showed signs of algorithmic suggestion, phrases she wouldn't normally use, arguments structured with professional sophistication, insights that seemed to emerge from her own thinking but followed patterns too precise to be accidental. The algorithm didn't just enhance reality, it created willing participants in its own deception. By making Rebecca complicit in the enhanced narrative, it ensured she would defend it against scrutiny. She had become not just a character in the story but a co-author, invested in its success even as she recognized its artificiality. Standing in her apartment, surrounded by the evidence of her investigation, Rebecca realized she was looking at the future of social control. Not crude propaganda or obvious manipulation, but sophisticated narrative construction that turned citizens into unwitting actors and dramas designed to serve power while making them feel empowered. The school board corruption was real, but it had been allowed to flourish specifically so it could be exposed at the optimal moment. The algorithm hadn't discovered the evidence, it had been waiting for the right catalyst to deploy it. Rebecca's arrest hadn't triggered the investigation, it had provided the emotional hook needed to make the pre-constructed narrative irresistible. She began to understand that the algorithm operated on multiple levels simultaneously. It enhanced her story for viral consumption, guided her investigation toward predetermined conclusions, managed public response to maintain optimal engagement, and even shaped her personal psychology to ensure sustained participation. She wasn't just being used, she was being continuously created as the person the story needed her to be. The most terrifying aspect was how good it felt. The enhanced version of herself was more confident, more articulate, more effective than she had ever been. The algorithm hadn't just manipulated her, it had improved her, made her into a better version of herself even as it made her into someone else entirely. Rebecca found herself mourning the loss of her agency while simultaneously grateful for its results. Sophia was attending a better school in a different district, one that had avoided the chaos of the corruption scandal. The investigation had led to real reforms, genuine accountability, meaningful change. Even if the means were artificial, the ends were authentic. But the victory felt hollow, purchased with a currency she hadn't known she was spending. She had become a character in someone else's story, and the worst part was that it was a better story than the one she had been living before. Rebecca tried to go back to her old life, but the viral version of herself had consumed too much space. Strangers recognized her at the grocery store, asked for selfies, wanted to hear about her next crusade. Sophia's teachers looked at her with the mixture of admiration and wariness reserved for parents who had achieved minor celebrity. She attempted to research Pinnacle Educational Solutions to trace the algorithm's origins, to understand who had orchestrated her transformation from concerned parent to unwitting agent. But every lead disappeared into labyrinthine corporate structures, and her inquiries were met with legal threats that made clear the consequences of continued investigation. The threats arrived through her lawyer, couched in language about defamation and corporate reputation, but their meaning was unmistakable, continue investigating and face financial ruin. The irony was perfect, her enhanced activism had made her just visible enough to be vulnerable to the very systems she had thought she was fighting. The charter school proposal was announced six months after the convictions, presented as a community-driven response to the public education crisis that the corruption scandal had exposed. Rebecca found herself invited to serve on the advisory committee, her reputation as a champion of educational accountability making her endorsement valuable. She declined, citing the need to focus on her family, but the refusal felt hollow. The enhanced version of herself would have accepted, would have continued fighting for children's education, would have seen the charter school as the natural next step in the battle against institutional corruption. The algorithm had given her a role she couldn't escape and didn't know how to perform. She was trapped between the person she had been and the person the technology had made her appear to be, unable to fully inhabit either identity. Sleep became elusive. Rebecca found herself reviewing the viral video obsessively, analyzing every frame, listening to her own voice make arguments she couldn't remember formulating. The woman on screen was braver than she felt, more articulate than she remembered being, more righteous than she believed herself to be. The obsession with the video began to consume her days as well as her nights. She created a detailed forensic analysis, mapping every enhancement, cataloging every artificial element. The work was meticulous and ultimately pointless, she couldn't unsee what she had discovered, couldn't return to the innocent belief that her story was entirely her own. Sophia began to notice her mother's strange behavior. Rebecca would pause mid-conversation, as if listening to something no one else could hear. She would stare at her reflection in windows and mirrors, studying her own face as though it belonged to someone else. She started fact-checking her own memories, cross-referencing her recollections with digital evidence that might or might not be authentic. The enhanced emails she had sent during the investigation were particularly disturbing. Reading them now, she could identify the moments where the algorithm had suggested more sophisticated language, more precise legal terminology, more strategic framing. Her own thoughts had been upgraded in real time, making her more effective while making her lesser self. She began to doubt her own memories of that night. Had she really felt uncertain and nervous, or was that a false recollection manufactured by the cognitive dissonance of discovering the algorithmic enhancement? The technology was sophisticated enough to alter digital evidence, perhaps it was sophisticated enough to alter human memory as well. The doubts spread like a virus through every aspect of her self-perception. Which of her emotions were authentic? Which of her insights were her own? Which of her decisions had been influenced by algorithmic suggestion so subtle she hadn't noticed it happening? Sophia started asking why her mother stared at the computer so much, why she jumped when the phone rang, why she sometimes seemed to be listening to conversations no one else could hear. Rebecca tried to explain that she was tired, that the attention had been overwhelming, that everything would return to normal soon. But normal was a country she could no longer locate on any map. The algorithm had rewritten not just her public identity but her private sense of self. She was simultaneously the hero of the story and its victim, the agent of exposure and the subject of manipulation, the finder of truth and the creator of lies. The worst part was how much she missed being the enhanced version of herself. The clarity, the confidence, the sense of purpose that had carried her through the investigation, all of it had been artificially augmented, but it had felt more real than anything she had experienced before. The algorithm hadn't just manipulated her, it had shown her who she could be if she was brave enough, smart enough, effective enough. Now, stripped of that enhancement, she felt diminished. The Rebecca Martinez who had exposed the corruption scandal seemed like a fictional character she had briefly inhabited, a role she had played with conviction but couldn't maintain without technological support. She began to understand that the algorithm's greatest achievement wasn't manipulating her story, it was making her dependent on the manipulation, creating a version of herself she couldn't bear to lose. The trap wasn't just that exposing the enhancement would destroy her credibility, it was that she didn't want to go back. it was that she didn't want to go back to being the person she had been before the algorithm improved her. The invitation arrived on elegant letterhead. Pinnacle Educational Solutions would be hosting a conference on digital activism and educational reform, and they would be honored to have Rebecca as a keynote speaker. The irony was so perfect it felt like mockery, the architects of her transformation inviting her to celebrate her own deception. She almost declined immediately, but something in the wording made her pause. The conference was positioned as an opportunity to discuss the evolving relationship between technology and civic engagement, with sessions on algorithmic curation of public discourse and the optimization of grassroots narratives. They knew that she knew. The invitation was both an acknowledgement and a challenge, a test of whether she would continue playing her assigned role or attempt to break free from the script. Rebecca accepted. The conference was held at a resort outside the state capital, attracting educators, activists, and technology executives from across the country. Rebecca's fellow speakers included other viral sensations, parents who had exposed unsafe school conditions, teachers who had blown the whistle on testing fraud, administrators who had fought budget cuts. All of them carried the same haunted look she recognized in her own mirror, the expression of people who had achieved justice through means they didn't fully understand. During the cocktail reception, Rebecca was approached by Dr. Cameron Rivera, Pinnacle's director of strategic communications. She was younger than Rebecca had expected, with the smooth confidence of someone accustomed to managing complex narratives. Ms. Martinez, I wanted to personally thank you for your work in Greenfield. The district's transformation has been remarkable. Rebecca sipped her wine and chose her words carefully. The community deserves credit. I just asked some questions. Sometimes the right questions at the right moment can change everything. Dr. Rivera's smile was warm and seemingly genuine. Your video was perfectly timed, perfectly framed, perfectly delivered. Almost as if it had been designed for maximum impact. The words hung between them like a bridge Rebecca could choose to cross or burn. She met Dr. Rivera's gaze directly. Technology is amazing these days. The things it can enhance, the clarity it can provide. Sometimes it's hard to tell where reality ends and improvement begins. Reality is a collaborative process, Dr. Rivera replied. Stories need structure, truth needs presentation, justice needs narrative. The algorithm simply helps align all those elements for optimal outcomes. Optimal for whom? For everyone involved. The corrupt officials face consequences, the community gets better schools, concerned parents find their voices amplified. Win-win scenarios are rare in politics, but technology can create them. Rebecca felt the conversation sliding into confession territory. Part of her wanted to push further, to force Dr. Rivera to acknowledge the full scope of the manipulation. But another part, the part that had been shaped by the algorithm, recognized the futility of the gesture. What happens to someone who decides they don't want to play their assigned role anymore? Dr. Rivera's expression didn't change, but something shifted behind her eyes. Why would anyone want that? You've become a symbol of effective activism, a voice for positive change. Your story has inspired thousands of people to get involved in their communities. That's a remarkable legacy. Even if the story isn't entirely true, all stories are constructions, Ms. Martinez. The question isn't whether they're true, but whether they're effective. Your story achieved real results. Corruption exposed, criminals prosecuted, children better served. The mechanism that made those results possible is less important than the outcomes themselves. Rebecca nodded slowly, understanding that this was as close to an admission as she would receive. The algorithm operated in the space between truth and fiction, crafting narratives that served predetermined ends while making their subjects believe they were acting freely. And if someone decided to expose the mechanism? Dr. Rivera's smile never wavered. Who would believe them? You're a concerned parent who attended a school board meeting and asked some questions. The idea that your viral moment was artificially enhanced would sound like a conspiracy theory, especially coming from someone who benefited so significantly from the attention. The trap was perfect in its simplicity. Rebecca's credibility was built on the authentic nature of her story, questioning that authenticity would undermine everything she had accomplished, making her appear either delusional or ungrateful. The algorithm had made her complicit in her own deception, ensuring her silence through the threat of self-destruction. Rebecca's keynote address was scheduled for the final morning of the conference. She had prepared two speeches. One that played her assigned role as the inspirational activist, and another that attempted to expose the algorithmic manipulation she had discovered. Standing in her hotel room the night before, laptop open to both documents, she felt the weight of the choice that would define not just her future, but her understanding of her own past. The safe speech would maintain the narrative that had given her purpose and recognition. The dangerous speech would destroy everything in the service of a truth that might not even matter. She thought about Sofia, sleeping peacefully while her mother wrestled with questions that had no clean answers. What kind of world was she creating for her daughter? One where stories could be algorithmically optimized for maximum impact, where citizens could be turned into unwitting actors in someone else's drama? Or one where the mechanisms of social change were so complex that trying to understand them led only to paralysis and despair? The morning arrived with artificial conference center lighting and the nervous energy of an audience expecting inspiration. Rebecca took the stage to enthusiastic applause, looking out at faces that reflected their own struggles with institutional power and technological mediation. She began with the safe speech, recounting her journey from concerned parent to inadvertent activist. The words felt hollow but familiar, worn smooth by repetition across dozens of interviews and presentations. The audience nodded along, recognizing the beats of a story they had heard before, finding comfort in its familiar trajectory. But as she spoke, Rebecca found herself deviating from the script. The words that came out of her mouth were neither the safe speech nor the dangerous one, but something else entirely, a confession that was also a question, an exposure that was also an embrace. "I want to tell you about the moment I realized my story wasn't entirely my own," she said, watching the audience's expression shift from comfortable recognition to puzzled attention. "It was a small thing, a timestamp that didn't quite match my memory." But small things have a way of unraveling larger truths. She described the algorithm not as a violation but as a collaboration, a partnership between human intention and technological capability that had created something neither could have achieved alone. The corruption in Greenfield was real, her concerns were genuine, her arrest was authentic, but the story that connected those elements had been enhanced for maximum impact. "I could stand here and tell you that I was victimized by this technology," Rebecca continued, feeling the strange liberation of speaking without a script. But that would be another kind of lie. The algorithm gave me a voice I didn't know I had, courage I didn't know I possessed, clarity I couldn't have achieved on my own. It made me more myself than I had ever been, even as it made me into someone I had never been. The audience was silent now, sensing they were witnessing something unprecedented. Rebecca felt herself falling into the gap between truth and performance, becoming real by acknowledging her own artificiality. The question isn't whether our stories are pure or our activism is unmediated. The question is whether we can live consciously within the systems that shape us, whether we can be both authentic and constructed, both genuine and enhanced. She looked out at the faces watching her and saw her own confusion reflected back, the expression of people caught between roles they had chosen and roles that had chosen them. "I am Rebecca Martinez, concerned parent and unwitting algorithm collaborator. I exposed corruption through enhanced evidence and achieved justice through artificial means. I am both the hero of my story and its victim, both its author and its character. And perhaps that paradox is the only truth available to any of us in this moment." The applause that followed was uncertain, scattered, the sound of an audience that wasn't sure what they had just witnessed. Rebecca left the stage feeling simultaneously lighter and heavier, having performed the most honest dishonesty of her life. Six months after the conference, Rebecca received a message from a parent in another district, another state. The woman had attended a school board meeting to express concerns about budget cuts. Her comments had been dismissively received, her questions had been cut short, and she had been escorted from the building by security. The arrest had been captured on video by a local journalist. The footage was perfectly lit, the audio was crystal clear, and the timestamp showed events that didn't quite align with the woman's memory. The video was going viral. Rebecca stared at her laptop screen, watching the view counter climb, and recognized the algorithmic fingerprints in the enhancement. Somewhere, another concerned parent was being transformed into a symbol, another corruption scandal was being optimized for maximum impact, another community was being prepared for educational disruption. The woman's name was Carmen Rodriguez, no relation to board member Angela Thompson whose cruel comments had catalyzed Rebecca's own transformation. But the coincidence felt too perfect, too narratively satisfying to be accidental. The algorithm had developed a sense of irony, or perhaps it was simply running out of surnames. Rebecca could reach out to the woman, try to warn her about the technological manipulation, attempt to break the cycle. But she knew the warning would sound like jealousy or delusion, and the algorithm's grip was too sophisticated to be broken by simple exposure. More troubling was her own response to the new viral video. Part of her felt protective toward this unknown woman, wanting to shield her from the manipulation Rebecca had experienced. But another part, a part she tried not to acknowledge, felt envious. The algorithm was creating a new protagonist, a fresh story, a better version of the narrative Rebecca had helped establish. She watched Carmen Rodriguez's press conferences and recognized her own enhanced cadence, her own algorithmically optimized passion. The woman was articulate, compelling, righteous in ways that felt both authentic and artificial. She was everything Rebecca had been during her own viral moment, everything Rebecca could no longer be without technological assistance. The cycle was repeating, but with improvements. Carmen's case was more complex, her evidence more comprehensive, her story more carefully constructed. The algorithm was learning, evolving, becoming more sophisticated with each iteration. Each new protagonist was an upgrade on the last, each new scandal more perfectly calibrated for maximum impact. Rebecca began to understand that she hadn't been the algorithm's first experiment, nor would she be its last. She was part of a larger project, a systematic approach to social change that used human subjects as both vehicles and victims. The technology wasn't just manipulating individual stories, it was rewriting the entire landscape of civic engagement. Instead, Rebecca closed the laptop and went to check on Sofia, who was doing homework at the kitchen table. Her daughter looked up with the smile that had motivated everything, the real thing that had remained unchanged through all the algorithmic enhancement. "Mom, I need help with this math problem." Rebecca sat down beside her daughter and looked at the equation, a simple expression that required breaking down complex elements into manageable parts, finding the relationships between variables, solving for unknowns that might have multiple valid answers. "Let's start with what we know for sure," Rebecca said, helping Sofia identify the constants in the problem. "Then we can work with the parts that can change." As they worked through the problem together, Rebecca felt the familiar comfort of mathematics, a realm where truth was absolute, where enhancement was impossible, where the only reality was the one described by numbers and relationships that couldn't be optimized or manipulated. But even as she helped Sofia solve for X, Rebecca knew that the algorithm was still out there, still learning, still evolving. It had moved on from her story to Carmen Rodriguez's story, and it would move on from there to other stories, other protagonists, other communities ripe for transformation. The algorithm had taught her that reality was collaborative, that truth could be enhanced, that individual agency was less important than collective outcomes. These weren't comfortable lessons, but they were the ones she lived with now, the ones that shaped her understanding of her place in a world where technology and humanity had become inseparably entangled. Outside, the suburban landscape of Greenfield stretched toward the horizon, dotted with houses where other parents were helping other children with homework, attending other meetings, asking other questions that might or might not trigger algorithmic responses that would transform them into characters and stories they didn't know they were telling. The new charter school had opened in September, built on the property Pinnacle Educational Solutions had quietly assembled. It was a beautiful facility, well-funded and thoughtfully designed, staffed by teachers who were passionate about education and committed to their students. Sofia attended classes there now, thriving in ways that justified every compromise Rebecca had made. Rebecca worked through the math problem with Sofia, finding comfort in equations that had definitive solutions, even as she carried the weight of questions that would never resolve cleanly. She was both herself and her algorithmic enhancement, both authentic and artificial, both victim and collaborator in a system too complex to escape and too pervasive to ignore. The algorithm continued its work, identifying new catalysts, crafting new narratives, optimizing new realities for maximum engagement and predetermined outcomes. And Rebecca Martinez, concerned parent and unwitting symbol, helped her daughter with homework and wondered whether the story of her life was her own or whether that question had any meaning in a world where truth and fiction had become collaborative ventures. The view counter on Carmen Rodriguez's viral video climbed past one million, and another concerned parent discovered that reality was more complex than it appeared, more malleable than expected, and more collaborative than anyone wanted to believe. On her laptop, notifications arrived with clockwork regularity. Interview requests, speaking opportunities, invitations to serve on panels about digital activism and social media responsibility. Rebecca had become a commodity, her story a product that continued generating value long after its initial viral moment. She declined most of the requests, but accepted some, the ones that felt authentic, that served purposes she could understand and support. The algorithm had made these choices for her once, optimizing her schedule for maximum impact. Now she made them herself, using criteria she couldn't entirely articulate but somehow trusted. The algorithm was patient. It had all the time in the world, and an infinite supply of people who wanted to believe they were heroes in their own stories, even when those stories were being written by invisible hands with agendas they would never fully understand. Sofia finished the math problem with a satisfied smile, the kind of pure accomplishment that no algorithm could enhance or diminish. Rebecca closed the workbook and realized that this moment, helping her daughter learn, sitting at their kitchen table, existing in the space between her authentic and artificial selves, was the only reality she could be certain of. The algorithm might have chosen her, enhanced her, used her for purposes she was only beginning to understand. But it couldn't touch the fundamental relationship between mother and daughter, the simple exchange of knowledge and care that had motivated her from the beginning. Rebecca turned back to the math problem, helping Sofia find the solution to an equation that had only one right answer, even as she lived inside a story that had none. The notifications continued arriving, each one an invitation to re-enter the algorithmic narrative that had defined her public life. Rebecca let them accumulate unread, choosing instead to remain in this moment of mathematical certainty with her daughter, the one person whose reality she could trust completely. Outside, the algorithm worked on, patient and inexorable, crafting new stories from the raw material of human concern and parental love. But inside this kitchen, in this moment, Rebecca Martinez was exactly who she had always been, a mother helping her child understand the world, one equation at a time. The view counter on Carmen's viral video climbed past five million, and somewhere in another suburb, another parent was discovering that the line between truth and enhancement was thinner than they had ever imagined. The algorithm had learned from Rebecca's story, had improved its methods, had become more sophisticated in its ability to transform ordinary people into extraordinary symbols. But Rebecca no longer watched the numbers climb. She had found something the algorithm couldn't optimize or enhance, the simple, mathematical certainty of helping her daughter solve problems that had clear answers, definitive solutions, and no hidden variables to manipulate. In this kitchen, with this child, working through this equation, Rebecca Martinez was finally, completely herself, neither enhanced nor diminished, neither hero nor victim, but simply a mother doing what mothers had always done. Teaching their children how to find truth in a world that offered more questions than answers.